Good evening, everyone. And welcome to our November meeting. I'm still in July. When people are putting Christmas trees up, I'm like, I'm not ready. We'll call the meeting to order at this time. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up tonight, every November, we do election of board officers. So at this time, I will turn the gavel over to Mr. Beckwith.
I would like to make the nominate Phyllis Hughes for Board Chairman.
Well, since there's no one else here to ask, all in favor, please raise your right hand.
Aye.
Thank you. That was very quick. Okay, now we'll make a nomination for Vice Chair.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a nomination to make Tony Hodges our Vice Chair.
Tony.
I mean folk, I'm sorry.
You're looking at your paper?
Sorry about that.
Nomination made. Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And one more, Secretary.
I mean, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a nominate Dr. Hodges for Secretary this time.
I second that. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you very much. First up tonight is approval of our agenda. It's in front of you, if I can get a motion to approve our agenda.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve our agenda this time.
Motion made by Ms. Infinger, seconded by Dr. Hodges. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Approval of minutes for last month, October 21st.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve our minutes for October 21st.
Motion made by Ms. Infinger, seconded by Dr. Hodges. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Ms. Smoke, is there any correspondence? Public forum? October Everyday Heroes are up next.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Door Church School District Four is proud to continue its Everyday Heroes Employee Recognition Program, a heartfelt initiative that honors the dedicated individuals who play an important role in the success of our schools. This program shines a well-deserved spotlight on employees who often work really hard behind the scenes, ensuring that our schools are run effectively and efficiently while positively impacting the education and well-being of our students. Each Everyday Hero receives a certificate of appreciation and a distinguished coin by the superintendent as a token of the district's deep gratitude for their remarkable service. First up, we would like to recognize Ms. Carly Nelson from Williams Memorial Elementary School. Come on up, Ms. Nelson. Ms. Carly Nelson is an instructional coach at Williams Memorial Elementary School. Ms. Nelson was nominated by Principal Margaret Memes, who highlighted her dedication to strengthening instruction, supporting teachers, and advancing student learning. Carly goes above and beyond, said Principal Memes. She stays current on the best practices, helps her teachers refine their skills, models lessons, co-teaches when she's needed, and creates a supportive space for staff to plan and analyze instruction. She's also super duper organized. That wasn't on the paper, but she really is. She reviews data, collaborates with the administration, she speaks Ruth Memes, if you know what I mean, and she even serves as the technology person in the school. No matter how many responsibilities she takes on, Carly always keeps what is best for the students and staff at the center of her work. Congratulations, Ms. Nelson. Come on, Ms. Memes. Ms. Ruth Memes. Good job, Ms. Nelson. I know. Mr. Lake, oh, aw. Mr. Lake, you want to take a picture with the family in the back, so don't y'all just sit. Next, we have up Ms. Angela Crosby, the Benefits Coordinator and HR Specialist for DD4. Woo woo, come on up, Ms. Crosby. Ms. Crosby was nominated by me, who praised her positive attitude, professionalism, and strong start in a demanding role. Her question or response is always, is there anything I can do to help? So we do appreciate that. Ms. Crosby has been a great addition to the HR team. While learning the ropes in tackling her new role, she ensures the works get done first for the department, but not only for HR, but for everyone in DD4. Even in a short time, she has made a lasting mark. Her servant heart, compassion, and drive to learn makes this an honor well-deserved. Congratulations, Ms. Crosby.
And hopefully I'll be back. Congratulations to everyone. Next up is Finance, Ms. Penny Hutto.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You have your board report in your board packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, board members? No, thank you. Appreciate everything. Facility and Operations, Mr. Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's see, facilities update. Last few weeks, we've been meeting and performing site visits for projects that we've got scheduled over the upcoming November break and going into the December break. So majority of time from the last meeting has been project prep. So we've got just some of the, some of the highlights is like Woodland High School and Harleyville Elementary, the kitchen equipment replacement. Those are two big jobs we hope to have completed before we come back in January. So that'll be great for those schools. Harleyville, I mean Clay Hill, we've got some carpet tile and tile replacement. Harleyville and Williams, we've got camera work and access control going on. And if you've been around any of the schools or looked around in here, you see we have the branding stuff still going on. So that's really highlighting the district and each identity of each school. Technology is still working on issuing out their Chromebooks. They've got 200 ready to go for Woodland, I mean 400, ready to go for Woodland High School. They're also working with me on camera upgrades at Harleyville and access controls that we're getting ready to do at Woodland High. We're also in the planning stages of replacing a whole bunch of Promethean boards with new interactive panels, and we hope to have that done before January. Food Nutrition Services Director Earl received confirmation from the Office of Health and Nutrition that the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program final phase allocations were awarded in the amount of $50,800 split between the three elementary schools. Food Nutrition Services is also working with technology to update the point of sales in the cafeterias, which will be good for student transactions. Transportation, we've got five EV buses running, a couple little hiccups, you know, with new technology, but nothing major. And we've got another one I heard that was delivered, will be receiving the other two soon. The first responder training we reported on last month has been rescheduled due to some conflicts, and we made the improvements in the bus parking lot. So we changed the configuration of the spacing, giving buses more room to pull in and out, less, less opportunity to bump into each other. And then you'll see there's a whole list of ongoing projects and the completion percentages, projects that we have pending under contract, so we're staying busy.
Certainly are.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions, board members? Thank you, Mr. Rock.
Thank you so much.
You and your staff are doing a great job. Next up, curriculum.
All right, so to kick off curriculum, we have two presentations tonight. The first one will be by Mr. Phillips, Seth Phillips. He's going to present on the DAP grant that they received that he was instrumental in putting together for the school. And that stands for Distinguished Arts Program Grant. So, Mr. Phillips, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Beckwith. Back in March of last year, Ms. Bevins and I worked together to write a grant that is a part of a bigger grant, the Arts and Education Grant. There's actually two grants. There's the EAP grant and then the DAP grant or the Distinguished Arts Program Grant, which is a little bit more money. And we got a notification in September that we were awarded the full grant of $20,000. And 5,500 of that goes to pay for institutes that Ms. Bevins and I can attend in the summer. But the rest of that was funded for some things that we have not done in a good while because of funding. And I've put an agenda with some of the, I'm just going to touch on some of them. We're hoping to get an art residence in the spring that will bring back drumming that we have not had since before COVID. We were able to purchase two brand-new multi-maker 3D printers that, and I have a little example here of something that Ms. Bevins will be using it. This is a loom, and she likes to do weaving with the kids, so she printed the loom on the 3D printer. And she is working on that, and we can print things that we can use in the classroom, and it will help support our arts programs, STEM-based, and some design work. In addition to that, we brought back recorders this year. The grant covered enough, gave us enough money to cover recorders for all third, fourth, and fifth graders. They don't have to buy them. The grant paid for them, so they got them absolutely free of charge, and we started that, that procedure. One of the things we'll be using for accountability that is part of this DAP grant is the South Carolina Arts Assessment Program. If I can explain, it's kind of like SC Ready for the Arts. It's a new program that they're implementing out, and one of the requirements is that we have to complete a task in that program. Fortunately, they had a recorder task, which is the one I'll be doing, because we purchased recorders with the grant, and then Ms. Bevins will choose a visual arts task to complete for that. But I just want to thank, you know, Ms. Bevins and her hard work. I also want to thank Principal Ruth Memes. I'm not as brave as Dr. Sanders in calling her that name, because I have to see her every day. And I also want to thank Mr. Beckwith and the, and the district, because without their support and things that they had to do on their part, none of this would have happened. So thank y'all for all your hard work and dedication.
Congratulations, Seth. Is Ms. Bevins here with you tonight?
No, she's not. She had to gain for her daughter.
Tell her how much we appreciate all that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, Mr. Phillips.
That's wonderful.
Mr. Phillips and Ms. Bevins are strong advocates for the arts programs in this district and always making an effort to better the programs for our students, and I certainly appreciate that. You know, we hear so often that there's just not enough time, and we all can agree, there's, sometimes we're short on time in life. So to take this on and to put in an application for a grant, it does take a lot of time, and we certainly appreciate it, understand the commitment there is to doing that. So thank you very much. It's $20,000 less that, we have to use that of our general operating fund, so appreciate that very much. Next one we have tonight.
Jeff, Ms. Rolack's here. Do you want to do Ms. Rolack before we get into the report card?
Do you do Ms. Rolack? Ms. Bowman doesn't mind.
All right, we're back. Last but surely not least, for our Everyday Heroes, we would like to recognize Ms. Tamara Rolack, the Administrative Assistant at Woodland High School, and she's a DD4 school bus driver. Ms. Rolack has been a steady presence at Woodland High for many years. She was nominated last year by Principal White, and once again, she stands out to be a trusted pillar of the school community. For October, she received nominations from both Latosha Bryant, Assistant Principal at Woodland Middle School, and Mr. Bo Sharpie, Assistant Principal at Woodland High School. So you've received three votes, three nominations. Ms. Rolack, Ms. Rolack rolls from one duty to another and handles it all, said Ms. Bryant. After running her bus duty and jumping into finding subs, organizing events, answering phones, she does it all. Ms. Rolack, you will call and put us on hold because you have 99 other things to do. That is facts. So you're always doing something. This is true. She keeps Woodland moving. Mr. Sharpie added that she is the glue that holds the school together. She does anything you ask of her with a smile and gives 100% in doing it. She's extremely good at multitasking and doesn't skip a beat when handling multiple tasks at one time. Congratulations, Ms. Rolack.
All right, Ms. Bowman, turn it over to you.
Good afternoon. First, I want to apologize for my voice. 'Tis the season. However, I'll try to make sure I'm clear so you can hear me. Thank you to the board and to our superintendent. Tonight, I'll be presenting our 2025 school report card data. We'll go over our academic data, our environment data. We'll talk about school ratings for each individual school. We'll talk about the data analysis that we did also next step as far as how we're going to address it. Our academic overview, we're going to talk about the following. Academic data represents elementary, middle, and high schools. Remember, this is district data, not school data. For our first section, for academic achievement, we have made steady gains in the ELA portion of our subject area. For SC Ready, which assesses, excuse me, third through fifth grade students, we made about a seven-point gain this year versus last year. In an ELC, we made a positive 10-point gain for English, too. For math, we've had just a small growth with our SC Ready math data. However, we are working on that now. Talk about that a little bit later. However, I do want to shout out Woodland High School, because with Algebra I and ELC, we had a 51-point gain with their ELC scores. That's all of the children scoring in Algebra at C or higher. We've never had that before, and we outperformed the state, so kudos to Woodland for that. For preparing for success, for our fourth and sixth grade students taking science, we had a 40% score with that, which is, it wasn't tested last year, so we don't have any data for me to tell you how we did performing last year or not. But for biology, we did have a 2% gain with ELC. In US History and Constitution, we had a two-point gain. It's not where we want it, but we are growing, so great job for that. In the area of our readiness for our kindergarten first and second graders, with our kindergarten readiness, which is our KRA report, we did outperform the state. Our kids entering kindergarten, 42% of them were ready for kindergarten last year. For third-grade readiness, which is for our second-grade students, we did have a decrease with ELA. Unfortunately, we went down a little bit with that, but we did increase in math. For our first-grade students being ready for second grade, we had an 18-point growth in ELA, and math was a 12-point growth. So we are making gains holistically. For our multiple language learner progress, we outperformed the state once again with our ML subgroup, far as their progress toward proficiency. With our achieving student language proficiency, we have grown in that area. We had a 13-point gain. We're right close to the state, but we did not outperform the state in that area. For student progress, this particular indicator talks about how we meet each individual student's needs in our schools. And this is just for elementary school and middle school. High school is not included in this indicator. For our overall percentage points, we only received 41% of our percentage points. However, we're working to grow that. For overall students, 40% of our students met their growth target. We made really good gains working with our lowest 20% of our students, which means we're closing that gap compared to our students that are at risk versus those students that are on track. For our students meeting median annual target, and what that means is we're looking at how well we grow our students from one year to the next. In other words, that's our keep-up growth. They move one year's growth. We were at 46%, which is almost right on par with what the state did, so that's really good. For our students with our added value target, and what that means is, is we call it two things, move-up growth or above one year's growth. We had 27% of our students met that target, which is about right on track with what the state did as well. However, we do have things in place to do better for next year. Our graduation rate, I will say again, kudos to Woodland, because once again, we've outperformed the state with our on-time graduation rate. It went up 7.6 percentage points from the previous year. Our annual dropout rate was, we didn't have any change there, but I did want to again give kudos to Woodland, because their dropout recovery rate was 66.7%. I went back about eight years to see if we've had any growth in that, and usually it always says 0.0. So good job for them. That means we had kids that dropped out, and they went and found them and had them come back to school, either go to adult ed, into a diploma program in order for them to graduate for the next year. So good job for them. College and career ready. For our college and career ready, the state looks at two things. It looks at our students and their being ready for college and their being ready for career. We make excellent gains in children being ready for our careers. However, we do have a little challenge when it comes to our children being ready for college. We do have things in place. There's a lot of things that they look at in order to determine that, and so Mr. White and his staff is looking into making sure that we have growth in that area. I'm almost hitting it, and I know I'm getting squeaky, I'm sorry for that. For high school success, we've had great gains in this area. Again, kudos to the high school. The State Department is trying to make sure that we're making sure that every high school student at any high school is on track to graduate and graduate on time. So this year, in addition to looking at how many students that's in the first-year cohort, and then how many kids graduate on time, Mr. White and his staff had to keep up with first-year students on track, second-year students on track, and third-year students on track, in addition to fifth-year students. And they moved every single cohort, with the exception of a small setback in their third-year graduates. So kudos to them to making sure they're meeting the needs of every student at Woodland High School. That's not an easy task. In the area of environment. You give me the answer. There we go, thank you. For our classroom environment, we do have, our students that returned from the previous year, there is an increase there. I wanted to make sure I shout that out, because with students, when teachers being so transient with everything that's going on today, we have been able to maintain our teachers, so that's a good thing. Our prime instructional time is at 80%, and we're keeping our student-teacher ratio at about 21 to 1. So that's a good class size. For student safety, we do excellent when it comes to our climate surveys with this. Our parents and our teachers feel like that they're safe, their kids are safe at school, the teachers feel safe at school, and that's a good thing. And that's for all of our schools, high school, middle school, as well as elementary school. For our school climate, teachers, students, and parents feel like we're doing a good job with our learning environment, our physical and social environment, as well as home and school relations. I'm always tickled, because the students always feel like we could do a little bit better, but the teachers and the parents feel like we're doing really well. So we're going to work with those students to make sure that they feel that way, too. For our overall school ratings this year, Clay Hill overall rating was below average, Harleyville Elementary was below average, Williams Memorial was average. Woodland Middle School, their first year, scored good for their rating, and Woodland High School is good for their rating. So shout out to Woodland High and Woodland Middle. This is the first year that we can remember when we look through the records that we've had both of our secondary schools to have a good rating. So great job to the middle and high schools in that. When we look at our overall rating points, we do have a decrease in some areas, of course, and increases in others. However, we are working very hard to make sure that we maintain those goods at the middle and high school, as well as increase our elementary schools. So as we look at what our report card's telling us, we found that, again, first time, good rating for the high school and middle school at the same time. We've had that 51% increase in Algebra I and ELC. We have 70%, 7% increase in our graduation rate. Our dropout recovery rate increased, as well as our increase in our teachers returning from the previous year. So we celebrate all of those achievements. For our grows, this is the area where we feel like we need to do some improving on. Our elementary school ratings dropped at least one level. We do want to work on that across the board. Our K through 8 ELA and math scores continue to fall below the state average, and so we have some plans to work on that. The only subgroup that met the annual target growth of 50% was our English learners, so we want to look at our other subgroups in making sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students and continue to grow our students. In our prime instructional crime, I'm sorry, our prime instructional time, there was a slight decrease from last year to this year, so we do want to work on that as well. Our next steps, our main focus here in DD4 is to make sure that we're focused on every child all day. child all day, every day, ensuring that all of our students meet and exceed their projected median annual targets. We want to make sure we implement and monitor our district instructional expectations for our professional learning communities, making sure we're doing observations and walkthroughs, making sure that our instructional presentations are sound, that we have lesson plans, our grading, guiding documents, and interventions are all to support our students. We want to make sure that we prioritize math this year, making sure that we increase our student proficiency, making sure that we set up systems of support for our students. Any students that are struggling or need additional support, that we have those supports in place for those students to be successful. And also, we want to continue to increase the number of students in our graduation cohorts who are college-ready. And that is our report card for this year. Any questions?
Any questions for us? Ms. Bowman, thank you for standing up there with your poor little throat and reading all that. We appreciate it. And congratulations to everyone that smoothed those numbers. And I, when I looked at this report at home, what really struck me was the part about the parents stating the fact that they feel their child is safe here.
Yes, ma'am.
That we have put a lot of time and effort over the past several years to upgrade the safety in all of our old buildings. I'm very proud. Mr. Martin, you, Mr. Beckwith, it's been great. I mean, we were one of the first schools to really had metal detectors. You know, it was very expensive to jump into that, but we just felt that that was so necessary. And all these teachers and administrators, how hard they worked to protect these children, just like these police officers that are with us tonight. So we thank you for all that y'all are doing, and we really do appreciate what all of you are doing. We're just here to support y'all.
We really thank you. And shout out again to all of the principals, all your hard work. I know y'all come to work every day, ready and excited, along with your staff. And we see what you're doing, and we're here to support you. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Next up, board, our policy updates. And this is our first reading tonight. So when y'all have time, take time to look over these and be prepared next month to come back because once we approve them next month, they will go into our school law. Okay. Next up is superintendent.
So I'll just start with recognizing you, Ms. Hughes. Surprise. So at the last board meeting, we recognized board members on meeting their certain levels. And you have reached a level five in your professional development. And so we would like to present you with a certificate of achievement and your pen from the South Carolina School Boards Association. And Mr. Lakin can get a picture of you. Lakin says I am.
And I just want to thank Ms. Bowman for getting up there and doing that. I was listening to, we were all listening to her all day and kind of waiting on the, I don't know if I can do this today, but appreciate her doing that. Everybody's kind of, it's that season right now. And just like Mr. Kennedy earlier was saying, he might have to bypass his meeting just so he can be at work tomorrow. So he's here today. I don't know if that's a sign of what's to come tomorrow. But just like what Ms. Bowman said, appreciate the principals and all the hard work. What you see in the accountability system with school report cards is the emphasis on every single child in the school. It used to be if you just moved this clump of kids to here and you moved this clump of kids over here, but now every single child in a school, whether it's the high school, middle school, or elementary school, has a measure that they have to achieve in order to get these growth points. And now versus years ago, growth is equally as important as proficiency. So you could have every student scoring exceeds on their state testing, but their growth could be unsatisfactory, and you'd just be an average school because they equal the same amount of points on the school report card. So regardless of where our children are, that growth measure is so important. And in a district like ours where we are trying to close achievement gaps because our students, their baseline, they've started a little bit lower, it's not always about getting to that exceeds level, and it's not even about getting to that next level. But as long as you can show incremental growth, you're going to get a lot of credit for those students. And you have some students on school report cards now. If you're in a fourth grade class, you could have a student, let's say that's an ML student, they're going to count on your ML score. They're going to count possibly on your lowest 20% performance student. They're going to count on your overall growth. They're going to count for your proficiency for math, for science, and for reading. So you have students at the elementary level that can count towards a school report card six, seven, eight times. And it's the same at the middle school when you have science in the sixth grade. And then at the high school with your career readiness, your college readiness, your wind testing, your, all the different types of testing that are going from the first day of school to the end of the school year. And now you see with the high school, if you have to follow, it used to be, this is the group that came into ninth grade, and in four years, if you have 100 kids come into ninth grade four years ago, and in four years, those 100 kids should graduate. And if they're not graduating, where did they go? And you had to be able to show evidence of where they went. They transferred to another school. And so it's a lot of work by the school to try to identify those students. Students go to jail. How can you get them enrolled in a program so you can get credit for them and not just count them as a dropout? So it truly does come down to every single child. Our schools know where our students or should know exactly where every student needs to move to with their testing. So there's really no secrets. It is a lot of statistics that go behind the school report card and understanding those statistics. But understanding those statistics will allow you to know where you need to target your instruction. I will say for years, years, our math instruction across the board has been all over the place. And so we have a new curriculum starting this year, Eureka Math at the elementary levels, where we've really seen discrepancy between classes and grade levels. So we've really focused on making sure the fidelity of instructional delivery of that curriculum is taking place. And it's the first time in a long time we've had a consistent curriculum. You know, we do have people who like to fall back to the old habits, so it's a lot of work to make sure we're doing what's proven, research-proven to be productive and effective in the classroom. So we really hope to see some growth there with our teachers. They have been working hard, our instructional coaches at the school level. I know they're meeting with Mr. Lee, it seems like every single, every other day, not every single day, every other day to make sure. But the biggest flaw of our programming, our instructional program, has been a disconnect between our schools, our teachers, and everybody kind of just surviving on their own. And so it's just, it's imperative that everybody be on the same page. And kudos to them. I was on, listening to them yesterday for a good bit, and they're just doing great work. And it's a lot of behind the scenes. I know they take the work home, just like many of us do. But it's important, and they're invested in this work. And I think, I think you'll see some really positive results at our elementary level going into next year. I think December with our I-Ready testing will tell us, give us a little idea on what direction we're going, and hopefully it's in a positive direction while the middle school continues to push hard. You know, the middle school, what happens is when you have a grade level that does really, really well, that growth measure for the next grade level gets a little more challenging because now they have to continue to move those students. So when the first groups, so I'll just say, sixth grade in the middle school set a really high bar. They moved those students exceptionally. That means seventh grade is starting all the way up here, and it's, it's a challenge. And so there's a lot of work to be done, but I know that work will happen. So kudos to everybody, and thank you for the work that gets put into it. And we recognize the middle school and high school today with some ice cream sundaes for the teachers and staff. I think it ended up being for anybody that was in the building. The whole high school came storming in today. But I'll tell you what, it was a breath of fresh air to just be around the kids. We get so bogged down in our work with adults that we forget sometimes that we're there for the kids. And it was a reminder of how awesome our kids are. They really are. We just sat there and watched them, just sit and enjoy some, some good old sweets and just respectful and polite. And I was at the high school so I could speak a little bit more on the high school. But you know, we can't do enough for our teachers and our staff, but that, hopefully that little token of appreciation is understood by them. So that's all I got.
And thank all of you. And before we take a motion to go into executive session, again, I want to thank all of you for making this year very special. We have a lot to be proud of this year in our district. A lot of good things have happened this year. And I think next month, being December, the end of our year, we might make a little list of some of the best things that's happened this year in our schools, just to remind us all how lucky we are. And he's right about the students. I had a mom tell me at Harleyville, she did not have one problem getting her son up. He was kindergarten to go to school every day when they started building the new playground equipment. She said he was so excited. I remember we were going to have a ribbon cutting for the playground equipment, and when I asked Mr. Beckwith, when's the ribbon cutting? He said the children have already cut the ribbon. Because the day they said they could go on it, that little boy was out that door, and his mom made me laugh talking about that. But I want to thank all of you. I want to, I want all of you to have a very blessed Thanksgiving, safe, and we'll see you back in December. So at this time, we will take a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters and legal matters. Motion, Ms. Dr. Hodges? We are now in executive session. Have a safe holiday. All right, the board went into executive session to discuss personnel matters, and we came out with this action.
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the certified support staff new hire personnel report as presented. And Madam Chairman, I move that we also accept the resignation of certified and support staff personnel reported as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'm seconded.
Motion made by Ms. Sinfinger, seconded by Dr. Hodges to accept the personnel report as presented tonight. Are there any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we just need one more motion. Motion to adjourn in a second. We are adjourned.